All right, good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Cohasset Select Board Meeting of Tuesday, September 23, 2025. We are meeting live in person at 91 Sawyer Street, Will Cup Commons. If you want to watch virtually, the Zoom link is on the back of the agenda for streaming live on Facebook, and we're also on Cohasset Cable 143 TV. We have a call to order, please.
Paul Graham, President.
Chris Black's here.
Ian Bragg, President.
Julie Rollins, President.
Ellen Mar, President. I'd like to invite everyone, like to, to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Thank you. Okay, first up, public comment. Is there any public comment from the audience? Name and address, please.
Will Ashton, 125 Doan Street. The proposed public safety building on 135 King Street is over scoped and overly burdensome to the future borrowing capacity of the town, when we have other large capital projects planned over the next few years. Building should be redesigned to be smaller and only meet the needs it was approved for. The list for consideration includes a public meeting space and assessing public restrooms, which requires costly plumbing work and takes away from space available for the police. When the project was approved, the town said there'd be no gym, no extensive site work, yet we have both. Fees should be removed. Parking should be in front of the building to minimize site work costs. The police already have two car bays at 62 Elm Street, and yet are proposing two new bays in addition to the Sallyport. These are within the new building footprint where costs exceed $1,000 per square foot. The two bays should be removed. The office space per employee is more than double what Situitt just built. It should be scaled back to the modest proposal that was approved and meets our needs. The main reason for building a satellite fire station was improved response times, yet the fire consultant hired by the town showed that those times are only improved for a limited area of 3A and 4A, while seeing no improvement in North Cohasset or Beechwood. The proposal was passed with assurances that there'd be no operating cost increases, yet the fire department cannot fully staff both ambulance crews, negating any improvement for response times. The project includes a new data center despite the town already having two, and IT spending three to four times in excess of any peer town. Emergency Operations Center is duplicative. It already exists at Deer Hill, yet we're planning to build one in a renovated section of the building instead of using it for the needed, using it for the needed police space. The project has admirable goals but doesn't appear to achieve them while also going almost three times over its approved budget. The entire program should be revisited and the plan redesigned. Thank you.
Thank you. Any, anyone else? No, are there any public comments online?
There are.
None. Okay. All right. So first up is license and permit event, the Cohasset Historical Society Touch a Truck on October 5, 2025. This will be at the Triangle at Doan Street and Church Street from 1:00 to 3:00 p.m. Chief Quigley is here and can speak to it.
It's, uh, okay, no issues on this. It is a, um, a new event, and the organizers are working via travel. So expect no problems at all. It'll be just a couple of hours. It's in addition, there's also an entertainment license because they will have an acoustic singer there.
Okay. And this is a fundraiser for the Cohasset Historical Society?
I'm not sure that it's a fundraiser. I think it's an event, you know, the church there.
Okay. So an entertainment license as well. Okay. Seems like these touch a truck, touch a truck events are very, very popular for the, for the kids.
Yeah, we do several a year. Yeah, there's, there's a lot of interest in this. The tow company, DPW, possibly the sheriff's, so a lot of people.
Great. Thank you. Does anyone on the board have any questions? No? No? Okay, great. May I have a motion to approve the Cohasset Historical Society Touch a Truck, October 5, 2025? You have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
May I have a motion to approve an entertainment license for the Cohasset Historical Society Touch a Truck event on October 5, 2025? You have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great. Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Mr. Pratt, the Cohasset Historical Society. Okay, next up, Cohasset Public Safety Building Discussion. So we have Chief here, Dan Palado, we have architects. Is everyone gonna come up or?
Yes.
Yes.
Because the people could see.
We, yeah, so people can, can see you on the, on the Zoom link if you sit up here at the table. So, um, before, before you guys get started, before your presentation begins, I thought it might be a good idea. Some of you have heard this before, Capital Budget last week, but just to regurgitate for the audience who watches Select Board, kind of where we are and how we got here. And I'll, I'll try to be brief on this. Jean Haley Dipold, our former chair, she presented at Capital last week, so I tried to take notes to, to make sure I captured everything. So when we, we started this process in June of 2023, when we established our FY24 goals and we acknowledged our present public safety building on Elm Street was tremendously inadequate for policing activity and out of compliance and state, state regulations, and that the fire department portion lacked critical facilities for operational efficiencies. In addition, there was a 2016 MAPC report which articulated all the same deficiencies we're still talking about nine years later, and stated, "One suggestion is to build a combined public safety facility along Route 3A to be closer to new developments causing higher call volumes. This approach will ensure timely emergency response throughout the town and provide adequate space for both departments to operate efficiently." So in that summer of 2023, we started looking at properties along the 3A corridor. We looked at the Esposito property, which is town-owned, and somewhere in the neighborhood of seven of the 10 acres. Is that correct, Chris? It's, it's wetlands. It's buffered by conservation on both sides. It wasn't suitable for the construction, for paving, for the heavy equipment that would be on there. And there wasn't any other real property available. Meanwhile, we signed a, a six-month lease with 135 King Street to off-site some policing activity, primarily our detectives there, because we had, we had no facilities on Elm Street to support them. And we started looking at King Street, because we were also talking about Town Hall, if you remember. The summer of '23 was, was quite, quite busy for us. And we kind of looked at King Street for Town Hall and quickly said, "No, this might be better for public safety." So we switched gears on that, and we started looking at 135 King Street for what we might need for a, a public safety building. And in late July, we consigned with Castle &amp; Blues, which is a public safety consultant, and they kind of walked us through what we could do, what we couldn't do, from a position of, "You don't own the building yet, so we can't open up the walls, and we kind of don't, we don't know." We thought at the time that all we had to, to bring up to Level 4 compliance were, were the detention cells, but in fact, it's the whole building. There was a lot that, that we didn't know at, at the time, but we kind of felt reasonably sure that our plans would be workable. We held public forums, we developed FAQs, we've offered tours of the facility, and at special town meeting, the town approved borrowing at 10.4 million to include the purchase and renovation, 2.4 to purchase and 8 million to renovate. And we opted for go requesting more money for design and engineering work because we've been down that path three times with Town Hall projects that, that we spent hundreds of thousands, if not millions of dollars, and the projects were voted down. And, and we, we tried to be economical in, in that, in that decision-making. Plus, we didn't really own the building, so we couldn't get in and tear down walls and, and really do a good due diligence on that. So we got the money approved, and we purchased the building in April of 2024. And simultaneous to that, the Cohasset Financial Planning Group was working to look at debt service and, and look at the needs of the town from a capital perspective and a cash flow perspective, and factored in public safety in addition to roads, sidewalks, schools, Town Hall, and other infrastructure needs. And so they were working on that at that time. I don't know, I don't think we need to, to regurgitate exactly why we need a new police station. I think everybody is on board with the, the need for it. If we have one more citation, which Chief Quigley expects will come sometime in October, will be our fifth, and will move us from negligent to gross negligent in terms of the liability for our detention cells. And Chief, correct me if I misspeak on anything.
No, you're correct.
We have no place for detectives to, to do their work. Our evidence storage is inadequate. And I mean, there's a myriad of other things. The arraignments are done in cars on Zoom.
Not here, more of the hearings.
Yeah, the hearings are done in, in, in cars on Zoom because we don't, we don't have a, a specific facility for it. So a Town Hall, I mean, a, a public safety working group got together and started working on this project and worked with, we hired an OPM, we have an architect, we have designers. This is not my daily wick, so I don't know all of the right language, so please forgive me. If you want to talk customs and tariffs, I'm all in. But this, this is not, not my, in my vernacular. So they worked and they went through three iterations, and it finally settled on, on scope and content of what 135 King Street should be for a modern, efficient, no bells and whistles, police station. And that's where we are. We came up with 10.4 million with the best of intentions, trying to save the town money, trying not to, once again, come up with, you know, plans and, and renderings and designs, and, and only to have it, it not, not go anywhere. We've, we've wasted enough money in, in that, in that arena. The fire department, meanwhile, on Elm Street, if anyone has toured it, also has some certain deficiencies and needs, and, and from an operating perspective and an efficiency perspective, they have no, no place to decontaminate. They're here. It's regulated that they, when they come back from a call, they have to decontaminate their gear. They hang it in the engine base. Okay? And so there, whatever is on their gear, and Chief Dockery, correct me if I'm wrong, is there, you know, in the, in the air. I mean, that, that's just a simple thing. Storage had been down in the basement for the paramedic supplies, and they've retrofitted a closet for stores, which is not efficient. I can't imagine how you do inventory out of a closet to figure out what you have and you don't have. So there are other deficiencies on Elm Street as well that need, need to be addressed. Again, not from a want-to-have, but from a need-to-have. And I think that's kind of in the MO of this working group that I've had the privilege to jump in and out of. But it's not, we, it's not that we want to have all these niceties. We, we need, this is a, a plan of need, it's not a plan of wants. And so finally, after the third iteration in August of this year, on August 5, we were presented with the first pass of the, the, the project in terms of financing, and, and we were all a little gobsmacked, honestly. But I think as we go through it, you will see that there's not a lot of fluff and, in, in the plans. And I just encourage everyone to listen with an open mind and to understand the certain requirements. There are things that we have to do, and I'm sure the architects and Dan, who's our OPM, will articulate the things that you have to do that you can't walk away from, such as ADA compliance. You just can't not be compliant. So hopefully that gives a good outline of where we were and where we are today. So that's all I really have to say about the beginning of this. I know Mr. Brady's been intimately involved with this process. I don't know if you want to say anything else.
No, I answered, said what I said, Capitol meeting about Allen's, that gives the job of describing how we get to where we are. I do want to address something when we have the time, so. Might look into this, both licensed architects, maybe can answer this question. We have a simple, for a fire station, fire, change, eight-month building. I'd like to see where that falls into place, that to address the citizen who proposed it, and to see where that falls into place. I don't think we've addressed that maybe unfairly, where the shortcomings are always. And we've sat with many a group discussing because we did look into it, but maybe to put it out there, just in respect to that person who worked so hard to draw some nice figures. That I'd like to discuss that at some point prior to the presentation, based on what we looked at and how we got to, as Alan said, how we got to where we are, why we have, where we are.
I think, I think it'd be helpful if we did the presentation, explained, you know, again, and a lot of this will be repetitive, but I, you know, every time that we do this and we're on TV and more and more people can see what the process is, we are going to go through. Can they hear me okay?
Sometimes it's just for the recording. Sorry.
So I want, you know, I thought it would be a good idea if we went through this. First couple of slides, we talk about how we got to where we are. How did the building get to where it is? How did the program get to where it is? And Amy, explain that at Capital Budget. Capital Budget had great questions. All right. So, and we're gonna, we're gonna be responding to those formally. So, you know, I, I think it'd be helpful if we just walk through that one more time. And then we do have the results of the bidding and the results of where the budget is today and what we, what we are going to need from the town meeting and the ballot for the project.
I, but I do want to address our presentation as well.
Well, I mean.
I know it was looked too in detail just as to where. I think that's unfairness to that person who presented it. Where it.
I mean, you, you want to answer that one, Paula? I mean, you, you, you went through it with a fine tooth comb, and I thought you did.
Sales, well, we're here too, because at home, they don't know who.
Oh, I'm sorry. Daniel Palado, OPM.
Paul Claridge, I'm of HKT Architects.
I'm Amy Dunlap. I'm a principal at HKT Architects.
Uh, we've, Quigley, the police chief.
John Dockery, fire chief.
Thank you. So.
So you were referring to the plan that was submitted. It was a redesign.
Yes, and I know you looked over it, and thank you so much. It'd be nice if maybe some people listening could hear that it was looked at, and that's, that's really where I'm getting at.
Yeah, the main issues that I saw with, the main issues I saw with the plan were, where the proposed Sallyport wasn't located. It's actually going right through to structural homes, so there's no way Sally could be located where it's shown right now. The location of all of these storage rooms and the detention cells are not, don't meet state requirements for security. They're up against windows. They're not in a, they're up against the exterior walls that at the moment, we don't know the exact assembly of those, and they should be in impenetrable walls with no windows. A lot of the office sizes proposed were a little bit small for what the furnishings are and the equipment that are needed in offices. And some of the ADA accessibility didn't quite work out properly. And the location proposed for the elevator also would not work properly because it's adjacent to the existing building's footings. So there'd be no way to put in the elevator pit without disturbing the existing building structure. So the main issues, I would say, is conflict with the existing building structure. Building does not secure for the detention areas. It didn't have proper security for the evidence areas and the other secure areas. The police need separation of the public from the least backup house spaces. And the ADA, I don't think worked out quite as well as it could.
Thank you so much, Ryan. Thank you for taking the time to go through it.
You're welcome.
You know, it, it also, the amount of renovation we're doing, as you know, we have to bring the entire building up to 80, and we have to bring the structure up to level four. So there's a lot of work that has to be done to get to that. So it's not as, as easy as a tenant fit up in downtown Boston. This is a little bit different.
So we do have some slides. Start right here with the design process. Talk a little bit about that. So this project undertook a very typical design process for a building of this kind. We started with an existing conditions assessment and due diligence, where we looked at the existing buildings. I'll talk about that a little bit in a minute, as well as program development. And that's where we figure out what spaces actually need to go into the building, what the department's needs are. From there, once we had those things figured out, we went into a typical design process. So you take that program, and you take what you know about the existing building, and you start to lay out conceptual plans in the schematic design phase, make sure that you're meeting all the needs. There's a number of iterations to that. We present the plans to the, to the committee, make sure that meets with the goals. We make changes to that. We start to look at what the exterior of the building's gonna look like. Once that's all agreed on, we then move into design development. And I like to think of each of these stages as just layering more information on it. Design development's where we start to bring the engineers in. They start to look at systems, start to look at what kind of mechanical systems will work. They do a lifecycle cost assessment, present options to the committee. We choose what that's gonna be, keep adding more information, get into construction document phase. That's where we start to put together a set of buildable and bidable documents that will withstand the rigors of public bidding in Massachusetts. We have very strict public bidding laws in Massachusetts. We have to put together a tight set of drawings and specifications. That's all the work that we undertake during the construction document phase. Then we go into bidding, and that's what we just completed. We had a public bidding process. We do have a low bidder that Dan will talk about in a little bit. And if the Select Board chooses to move this forward to Town Meeting, and there's a successful vote at Town Meeting and a successful vote at the ballot on the project, that's when we would start construction. So that's where we are in the process. If we could go to the next slide. So as I said, the first step of this was to do some due diligence and some existing conditions assessment of 30, 135 King Street and 62 Elm Street. We, at this point in time, we put together some drawings of the existing buildings that we could use as our base for the project. We got all of our engineers into the buildings to look at the existing systems and what the existing condition was of all of those things. And this is where we did a little bit of structural investigation. There's been some talk about going from a Level 2 facility to a Level 4 facility for folks at home, or for any of you who aren't aware of what that means. The building code has certain requirements for seismic and for structural requirements based on the type of facility that you have. A Level 2 would be a standard commercial facility. Level 4 is getting into these public safety buildings. Basically, they have to withstand something like an earthquake, something catastrophic, where the first responders need to get out and to help the community. You don't want your police station or your fire station to collapse in an earthquake. You want them to be able to help everyone. So the requirements for the structural system is more rigorous than in a Level 2 facility. We needed to know exactly what the structure was in this existing building so that we could figure out if it would meet those Level 4 requirements, which it did not. And so we had to make some upgrades to the system in order to, to meet those requirements. We did topographical surveys, and we also did a hazmat assessment of the building to determine where asbestos might be. That we did find a little bit of asbestos that would be abated as part of renovation. The next slide. So then we went into the program development process. As I said, this is where we figure out exactly what the needs are for the departments. We start that process with a questionnaire that both Chief Dockery and Chief Quigley completed. We ask a lot of questions about what their day-to-day operations are, what their safety concerns are, what kind of equipment they're storing. For us, it's really important to figure out what their workflows are and not just get a wish list of, gee, I want an office that's this big, and I want a meeting room that's this big. That's not what we're doing. We're making sure that we are designing spaces that meet your unique workflows. We do work all over the Commonwealth for public safety, but, and we know the different components that go into these buildings, but we also know that every community is different. And in order to come up with a beating, a building that's going to meet your needs, it's important that we spend the time in this phase to really understand your work processes. We interviewed the chiefs, we toured the facilities, we saw what kind of spaces they needed. We compare that to what we do in other communities around the Commonwealth, and then we put together a program with a list of different spaces and what their square footage requirements were, what their adjacency requirements are, who needs to be next to what, what kind of equipment do they need. And that becomes the outline for the design process as we move into conceptual design.
Yep.
So as we were going through the process, the initial response was obviously a larger building and, you know, space constraints, but needs, a little too many wants. We, we pared it down with the working group, 30,335 to 28,823, down to 23,600 feet. So to think that we just answered the questions, gave them everything that they wanted, would not be accurate. There is a balancing act of how we make the building work within the space that we have, within the structure that we have, and within the, the, the programmatic needs that the police chief and the fire chief have, had articulated to us as our town meeting asked us to do.
So this is the proposed site plan. The sort of peach color block in the middle there is the existing building footprint. On the left-hand side of that, the red is the fire department substation, and the blue is the police department detention block, which has the Sallyport garage where you bring the, the detainees in, in a car, and then you unload them, and then you bring them into the, into the holding area. The fire station was located so that there would be quick and easy access straight out the drive out onto King Street for response times. Basically, when there's a call that comes in, fire department tends to be in the station. They need to get out quickly and efficiently. Police Department cruisers tend to be out on the road. It's not so critical that they get out as quickly from the station there. So that was the key decision to put the fire station or the fire substation with easy access out to King Street. Putting those two garage elements facing out into the existing parking area did have an impact on existing parking spaces. Just having the, the doors there eliminates some existing parking spaces. So in order to meet the parking needs for the department, we had to add a second parking area behind the building. You can see the drive on the right-hand side of the building there that goes up to a private parking area for the police department. And then up in the back parking area, there's also access to the transformer, the generator, places for, for dumpster, garbage, those sorts of things hidden behind the building. Next slide. This is the first floor plan of the building. The public entrance is where the public entrance is in 135 King Street now. The difference is we'll be going into a vestibule, which is something that's required by the energy code, and then into a lobby that will be open to the public, but locked down beyond that for police and fire only. There is a community and training and EOC room right off the lobby that does have public access. There's access to the reception that can let people into the, the police area. That's right, as you come in, right to the right off the lobby. Off the left off the lobby, you go into the fire department substation, which has the apparatus space. In the back of the apparatus space is where the decontamination spaces are, both for laundry and for people. If they come back and they have contaminants on them, they can shower, they can clean their turnout gear, get all of those harmful contaminants off of them. There's also a day room, which is where they eat their meals, where they spend their time when they are not doing work. And then there are dorm rooms for sleeping. There's locker rooms for showering, and a triage room and a report writing space as well. For the police department on this floor, it's mostly administration spaces within the footprint of the existing building, the police chief, conference room, those sorts of spaces. And then the gray addition that you see there, again, is the detention block, where the, you have the Sallyport, you have the detention cells. There is one female cell and then two male ADA cells. There's a booking room all in that area. Next slide. This is the second floor plan, which is devoted mainly to police operations and staff support. This is where we have locker rooms, we have sergeants, we- This is where we have locker rooms, we have sergeants, we have the sorry. Blanking for a minute there. We have the armorer and the armory spaces. Those are the words I was trying to think of. The zoom room that the chief was talking about where they can have hearings. The police officer can go into this room and not be having a public hearing from a police car. They can actually be in an appropriate space with access to cameras, access to a desktop for a computer and all. Evidence is stored on this room. On the in the fire department wing, the the large white square there is actually a double height space. The trucks are quite tall and so you need a double height space in their garage space. But then the gray spaces to the back are all mechanical, electrical and storage spaces serving the building. Similarly, over on the right hand side where the police addition is the the white area in the front there is the double height space where the Sallyport and the vehicle impound days are located. The gray in the back there are some meeting rooms, a wellness room. One of the things that we hear time and time again is how important it is to focus on our first responders' health and well being. They go out and they see very traumatic events time and time again. This is a space where they can go after something like that happens. They can decompress. If it was necessary to bring a counselor into the station to talk about something traumatic that happened, this would be a private space for something like that. Next slide. The existing upper level of the station is really classified as a mezzanine. It's a it's a bit of a complicated thing with the the building code. But because of its classification, there aren't two means of egress out of it. We could really only accommodate equipment and not human beings in a safe way up there. So it's become a mechanical mezzanine. There's also servers up there and then the town data center located up there. Next slide. So the elevations, the exterior elevations are shown here. The additions were designed to complement the existing architecture of the building. We are matching the red brick of the building. We are trying to match the roof slopes and the roof lines. But on the additions, we were picking very durable materials, knowing that this is a municipal structure, that low maintenance is important, that lifespan of the materials is important. Masonry obviously accomplishes all of that. The white creep color that you see there are prefinished fiber cement plating. Again, a durable material that requires minimal maintenance over the long term. And then at the main entrance, you can see in the lower image there, that's the main elevation that you see off of King Street. At the main entrance there, there is an accent color at the door, just to market as an important entrance and and a canopy to protect people as they come in. You see clear stories which bring natural light into the apparatus space and into the to the Sallyport areas. Again, natural light in these buildings in any building is so important for occupant health. It also lowers your electricity needs if you can have some of that borrowed natural light and not turn on the lights when you need to do your work. Next slide. And this is just a three dimensional rendering of what the building looks like with the additions. Again, you can see that accent, sort of the blue wall where it says cohesive police. That's the main entrance into the building there.
So coverage is coverage times for the fire station. We went over this in depth with the Campbell Improvement Committee. Coverage times varies obviously with the new station. So your your existing times are in the seven minute range, high seven minute range, and your new times are in the low sixes, six minute range with the second station, when the second station is is operating. So the the this slide just demonstrates how many more streets get access within four minutes of the bell going off at the fire station and and not getting to the 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 call. It's a it's a drastic increase. The bisecting red line in the middle of this is obviously the train. And the train does add up to two and a half minutes to a call. And that goes away for the western part of the town. Well, if there's an ambulance in the western part of the town and the eastern part of the town, but if it's on the eastern part of the town. Finances. So tried to make this simple. You purchased the building for twenty five thousand. We've spent roughly one million seven hundred and ninety five thousand on legal work, architectural work, engineering. And some odds and ends record retention for the police department. We received six bids. The lowest bid was from M O Connor at eighteen million nine hundred and eighty seven thousand. The estimate that we had, last estimate we received at the midpoint of the construction document phase was nineteen million seven hundred and eighty thousand. And the estimators want that to be sort of the mid range of your bidding. They expect the lower bid to be lower and we landed exactly where where that came in. The lower bid was lower. The second bid was right around the nineteen seven eighty. But we we have M O Connor. We're currently reviewing their D C A M sheets right now, which is something that we have to do. It takes time. This is an eighteen million dollar contract. Want to make sure everything is honest and perfect before we make that recommendation. But M O Connor's been around for a long time and done a lot of projects. We expect that to be completed soon and for them to be approved. We have construction administration for the designer, O P M, testing and some some odds and ends at one billion four hundred and sixty four thousand eight hundred. Radio infrastructure, furnitures, fixtures and equipment, which also includes cameras, telephones, COD access throughout the building, all the electronics in this building. This is an extremely secure building with varying levels of security. And all of that infrastructure, it the conduits are put in by the general contractor. But we purchased the actual equipment as we get closer to the end of the project. So we 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 know what it's going to cost. We bet it out towards the end of the project so that I that we can get vendors that have similar materials that match some of your other buildings and and that we can get the latest technology at the day. Believe it or not, the technology changes so much. If we we put in what was in the bid on bid day, by the time the project was completed, some of it were already be old. So we want to make sure we have the latest and greatest. We have traffic light at seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which is an estimate. Hingham's traffic light for their fire station was five hundred and eighty thousand all in two years ago, completed recently. So the seven hundred and fifty thousand is 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 going to be accurate. That study is is begun. We're already in Mass dot with regard to the curb cut. We just got our we've got some responses back from Mass dot of things that we need to do and the traffic study is one of them. Project contingency at eight percent. It is an alteration to an existing building. So that's the adequate number for a project like this. And you've already appropriated ten million four hundred thousand dollars at your town meeting back in twenty three article number seven. That leaves us with an ask of eighteen million three hundred and seventy three thousand five hundred and eleven dollars. And I think that's it.
Thank you. Questions? I'll start to the left, Ms. Rollins. I just had a question about the traffic light. So towns, sorry, are broken. Do towns typically pay for the traffic light even though it's a mass dot road and they govern it?
Not only do towns pay for the light, we have to get permission from them to put the light in. We have to go through a traffic warrant to determine they'll let us put the light in. They almost always say yes for public safety facility regardless of the traffic warrant. But if you were asking for, you know, a red, green situation, most of what? A blinking light that changes when the alarm goes off, you'd have to meet the traffic warrant for them to allow you to install. The three A is on the tip. The transportation improvement program, hopefully they'll push that along faster and and they'll install the light at the tip. But we can't assume that, so we're carrying it.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Frog.
I just had a few questions. First of all, with the design, one of the things that we've learned from doing the town hall iteration a few times is one of the greatest drivers of the price is the square footage of the building. So with the current design, is there any opportunity at all to reduce the square footage of it, yet obtain those those things that are needed for the police, the fire? And if so, would it be would it be significant or would it be de minimis? In in other words, would it just be a small change or would it be none at all, I guess?
So to to change, to do it de minimis, by change, or to do it with a significant change would be disadvantage disadvantage in the bidders that bid on the project and would have to would have to start over. With regard to where we could remove space, it's not that simple. I mean, I've heard, you know, I've been I've been in class and now for a long time. You know, I've heard just lop off the fire station or just lop off the the cells in the in this and lop this and lop that. The fire station houses all the mechanical, electrical in and and that second floor that she showed you. And that's for a reason, because it's easily accessible from the back, which is a controlled space so that all the mechanics can only be accessed through security. So it's not as simple as just lopping something off. Could there, could we reduce some some technology in the building? We could probably peck away at it, but I don't think you're going to get significant numbers out of this building with this program.
And also for the architects, you didn't get a chance, even though you introduced yourself. If you could talk about how many other public safety buildings that you've designed at H K T. Just give us your experience in designing those. You don't have to go to each building, but just give us an overall glimpse experience and how many that you've done.
Yeah. So H K T has been in practice for fifty years now and currently almost our entire practice is municipal work in Massachusetts. We do public safety buildings. We do standalone police and fire. We also do D P Ws, town halls, renovations, feasibility studies, design, construction, you name it, we have done it for municipalities. I don't know the exact number of public safety buildings that we've done. Off the top of my head, we've done public safety buildings in Massachusetts. We've done them in New Hampshire. I have been working on public safety buildings for twenty four years, I think. So I've been involved in a lot of them. Paul and I have worked on a number of them together. We have other people in the office who have helped out on this project who've had experience working with them as well. So we do have a lot of experience doing them.
From the bid that bids that you received, the low bid, from what the price was put out for it, it my math shows that it's seven hundred and ninety three thousand under budget from what you would put.
Underestimate.
Underestimated price, yes. And so in the current state of the construction market, would you see that in the future going up or going down, even though you don't have a crystal ball?
I don't see anything going down. I wish things would go down. I wish things would stay level. We we saw a spat for about eight months this year of increased bidding activity, which is usually a sign that things are leveling off. But that's that was spat. It wasn't a continuing trend. So there's a wonderful, there's a wonder, and I encourage you as a select board member to look at the Mass Food Building Authority website, massfoodbuildings.org. They have a wonderful chart of public construction. Although it's schools, all the public construction is basically following the same graph and it's almost parabolic in the last few years. It's 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 it literally looks like a parabolic curve. So I don't believe I don't believe delaying this is going to help you.
I I have gone on the 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 treasurer's website to look at that, but I I try not go back because of that reasons.
I don't blame you.
I try not have nightmares, but well, thank you on that. No more questions.
Okay, Mr. Flex.
First of all, Mr. Frog stole my question. I was going to point out that we we have some experience with projects like this that generate some sticker shock. And so we go back to the drawing board and we try to redo it in a value engineered way and then it backfires and we end up with a more expensive project that has a smaller scope. So appreciate your thoughts on what's happened with other towns and what you've seen in prices. Answered the question, so I won't make you go.
Thank you.
That's real familiar with the nineteen seventy four study, right?
Heard of it.
The Kimball Report.
And can you maybe, you know, chief, tell me primarily pretty much how that wound up? What did it say that we should do back in nineteen seventy four?
Nineteen seventy four, the Kimball Report recommended that we build a public safety building up in the three A Sawyer Street area that would serve the community for the future.
When that would encompass police and fire.
Correct.
So we're pulling that out of it. So fifty fifty years later.
Fifty one. I'm counting. I'll just note that I was six at the time.
Just a question for Chief quickly. Chief, as we stand, do we have a police station right now?
We have a police station, but I've been forced to separate, call it division, the criminal investigation division, which which covers school resource officers, prosecution and the detective unit out of Elm Street. We just didn't have any room. We're bursting at the seams there. We've used every single inch of usable space in that building. So we're we're really operating two locations now and it's really, it's it's really problematic in as much as there's just not the communication that that we used to and we like to see. You know, we're we're trying to do training at at King Street now, but it's really, it's bifurcated the the department. And, you know, we we're starting to feel it, quite frankly. It's been two years. The detectives have been up there for two years. And and this is, I I cannot stress enough how critical it is that that we address this one way or another. We could talk about, you know, lopping off a garage or things like that, but the bottom line is we we have three garages on Elm Street now. We had to take one of those garages out of service to have a proper evidence storage area. And 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 when I say proper, I I should put that in parentheses because it because it's it's a garage bay that we cinder blocked up and alarmed and 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 put cameras in. And we're we're making do with that, but we we did have three garages on Elm Street. Now we have two. We don't have a Sallyport. We had to take our Sallyport on Elm Street out of service. And just just so you know, we're talking about Sallyport is is really a sterile area. It's just for prisoners. The cruiser pulls in with the prisoner. The officer gets out. There's a lock box for for any weapons they have, whether it's the taser, firearm, ammunition, pepper spray. It gets locked in a box there. There's no, there's no brooms, there's no rakes, there's no shovels. It's just for prisoner transfer and it leads right into the booking room and into the to the to the holding area. So that's where you really cannot, you do not use that. You do not use that area for for storage or or for, you know, to keep the snowmower or the lawnmower, all all things that we have, by the way. You know, we'd we'd we're just like your home. You know, we have all the stuff you have at home, but, you know, we're we're a police station. We, you know, we have to, you know, move snow. We have to maintain the vehicles. We store snow tire. We store tires. We install baby seats, child safety seat of our bays. So it's important that we have three bays. I mean, you you can lop one off and probably save a thousand square feet, but I can guarantee, you know, we're going to be building a shed probably somewhere on the property to to store some of these things. We we just have stuff. We have boats. We have an A T V that is a frontline response vehicle to to the state park and and the spur trails. And that has to, you know, that that stands ready to go out the door. It's it's backed in, it's plugged in at all times and we use it quite a bit. And we use it quite a bit. Um, the the state park and these trails are really popular. There's a lot of bikers, there's a lot of runners. There's cross-country events, so we're in there. Uh, we need access, you know, a a great portion of of Wampe Tuck and those that trail network is in Cohasset. And when someone calls nine one one for those trails, we're dispatched and we we pick up uh, fire personnel and we go in, you can't get a cruiser in there most times uh, to the places we want to go. So that 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 UTV, um, utility vehicle has to remain, um, you're ready to respond at all times. So again, that takes up space. We have a, we have a boat, um, a small boat for, um, you know, incidents on the reservoir, the ponds. We also have a big boat for the ocean. Uh, but that, you know, that stays in the water all summer and we store it uh, separately, but we 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 maintain a boat, so we have stuff. This it the, you know, public safety inherently comes with with stuff. Um, so we need the space and, you know, anybody who who has a garage at their house is probably most of us do. The bays never remain empty, they're always used for something. Um, but again, just that there's a critical need here and I hope that we can uh, address it. Again, we can, we 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 can try to, you know, lop small pieces off and and quabble about um, you know, square footage, but at the end of the day, uh, we we the group really did work hard and my staff uh, worked hard on on being realistic. You know, you know, we were mindful of the budget and that's, you know, why the why the scope of the project was reduced by twenty-two percent. And this is the third iteration of um, of cuts. And, you know, one of one of the comments I heard was about, you know, keeping the EOC at at the uh, at the Deer Hill School. It it's been there for a while and I can tell you, uh, you know, we use it a lot. You know, when the power goes out, uh, during COVID, we used it for a year. But, you know, I personally received, you know, phone call from the chair of the school committee uh, when we're holding a press conference saying, you know, you have to get out of here. You know, we we can't have you on school property. Uh, you're interfering with the learning process, uh, you know, there's there's offices coming and going, uh, there's media there. Uh, so when these things happen, uh, the school, it's really not good to have this, all the kids are looking out the window and, you know, they know something's going on. We're we're interfering with the school day. Um, so it's really the proper place to have it is in a public, you know, on three A at a public safety building and it'll be room for forty-nine people. And we can hold a press conference, we can hold hold our own training, uh, we can uh, our own training classes. And also, you know, it's a community room, the select board wants to, wants to meet there, they could. Uh, so it's it's just a, it it solves several problems.
Um, I was some bounce to that. So I've heard it said that if we get it to twenty-one thousand, let's get this building passed.
I'm sorry?
I've heard it said that if we get it to twenty-one thousand square feet, let's get this building passed, Spirit Team work. But we started at twenty-eight thousand.
Thirty-something thousand.
Something, I apologize, but we are down to ten.
Twenty-three, twenty-three.
Twenty-three, six.
Okay, Paul, tell us how we got there and what are we trying, what what is uh, whatever our police and fire have given up or how we came to that? Bring it down that far.
Yeah, it's been a long process. I don't know if I can remember it all off the top of my head.
I do.
We have the, we use the microphone. Oh, sorry. We did have the program spaces of all the spaces that the police and fire departments had both put together they needed. And as we laid out those areas inside the existing building, it became obvious that there was no way to fit everything that we needed inside that existing footprint or everything they want. So going through that, looking at talking back and forth, we went through a lot of meetings and iterations and can you live with this and not? So I know that we've eliminated some of the bulk evidence areas, some of the bulk storage areas, we still have some. We think the school resource officers are now not being occupied in this building, they're going to be at a different facility.
Well, we put them in with detectives, they don't have their own office.
So they don't have their own office. So a lot of this co-sharing of office space, you know, was kind of done. And um, size of the training room, I believe, was taken down a little bit. We don't have a separate office for um, the lieutenants, I think. So a lot of things have been shared to try to minimize the footprint we're taking, whereas in the program, they have different offices for all of these.
Safe haven experimenting and licensing technology charging will combine with other control call.
Thanks.
Welcome.
Also, part of the challenge is we don't, we don't know what's coming in in the future. Um, you know, policing has changed. I've been on for the look of my sleep, I think it's thirty-seven years, I think this year, maybe thirty-eight. Uh, but things have changed. When I started, there was a phone on the desk. We had three police cars, there was a microphone and a typewriter. And that was it. Uh, now we're, you know, we have crisis intervention team that, you know, does this, you know, home visits to our people who are, you know, suffering through or working through mental uh, mental illness. We have, you know, a very busy rehab center in town, two of them really. Uh, one is an overnight facility, the other one's a day facility. Uh, medical buildings, we have neighborhoods we never had before. Uh, we we are busy, we used to, you know, the offices are going um, the entire shift. And one of the interesting things is they're off the road, um, you know, making notifications and trying to uh, fall on some of the types of calls we get. Uh, they're probably off the road, I would guess, probably thirty to thirty-five percent of their shift. Uh, just on the phone with DCF, Department of Children and Families. You know, we we have to make these notifications and you could spend two, two and a half hours on hold on a weekend night, uh, because the whole state is calling into that eight-hundred number. And you could put in a queue and you just, you wait and you can't, it's not something you can do from the cruiser. You know, we're not writing, you know, the these reports in the cruiser, it's just, it's not a way to um, to operate. So, uh, there's constantly traffic in and out of the police station along with interviews. You know, we've, we've conducted, you know, we we're starting to conduct some of the interviews on King Street now. We have some major cases that are, you know, going to be in national news coming up in the next month. And, you know, one of those interviews we've been doing at King Street, that's not optimal either, but we just can't do them on Elm Street. So, uh, there's, there's a lot of, lot of different change coming up, I mean, this in ten years, it wouldn't surprise me to um, to see that we're running, uh, you know, with with drones. You know, Drew, if we get a call for an accident, the drone will be launched, you know, uh, you know, off off the top of the station and get to the, get to the call beforehand, that that's a, that's a huge thing in in towns, I know.
Yeah, we we just, we just put a drone pad in.
In in Taunton, yeah.
Yeah.
But police departments are doing that, but it's called, there's, there's a program called, I think it's, what's it drones, it's first responders? But as dispatch gets the call, they log it, the drone launches out of a box on the roof immediately and and goes to that call and the officers en route to that call have eyes on. So there's all this technology that's coming and we just want to be prepared for the future. Um, it would be a shame to uh, build something for today and then have to tear it all apart because, you know, this is the future, this is where policing is going.
My last question. How we're basing our needs in a nineteen seventy-four study primarily. I'm going to ask this to Paula and, sorry, Amy.
Amy.
What do you think our shelf life? Putting this building up, getting it up and running. Building for the future, is my take. I'm going to say that, thanks that the chief is. So what do you say? How far ahead are we looking in the future? I have a tack on nineteen seventy-four, I'm hoping that we're tacking on about a hundred and ten years. So, you know, that's something that we need to ignore.
Well, uh, when we had our programming discussions, we were looking out to the future. When we build municipal buildings, we're typically trying to uh, to design them to last fifty years. I mean, municipal buildings stick around for a long time. Um, and that's why looking at durable materials are so important, looking at flexibility, talking to the chiefs about the future operations and making sure that we design spaces that meet the needs now and can be flexible for the future.
I'll say kudos to Elm Street then.
Yeah.
Thank you so much again.
It's it's served us well, but it's time.
It's time.
Yes.
Yep, um. Okay, so I have, I have a few questions, some have already been answered. Um, in your experience with public safety buildings, what is a standard metric to measure one project against another? Is it square footage per capita? Is it square footage per square mile? Is it like, like, like how, what's a good benchmark for us to look at?
Oh, boy, that's, that's kind of a loaded question. I I I I don't I don't ever try to compare one town to another town.
Okay.
Uh, that happens all the time, senior centers, it happens all the time.
Town halls, schools.
Schools, um, and the reason being is a more urban area like Brockton is going to have more calls and more offices for smaller area than you would believe. So it's not as simple. It's based on population. It's not as simple, it's based on calls. It's it's based on a lot of things. And 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 a lot of that data, um, we get from uh, the police chief, uh, to make sure that we are have the adequate spaces for the amount of transaction system. You know, like, you know, at one point we had a permanent area for permitting and licensing. Well, it it was not needed for permitting and licensing. We 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 put safe haven in there and what other things in that space? So we can, we can add things into the spaces because your, your, your number calls aren't wrong.
Right.
So I don't know that there's that a metric.
Okay.
So that that's. That I'm aware of.
Yeah.
I don't, maybe you do.
No, I mean, I think you you answered it really well. I think every community is different. Um, you know, just to Dan's point, I mean, we've worked on stations where um, seasonal populations have had a real impact on police operations and, you know, who might be coming in summer months and partying and the arrests that happen there. Um, as the chief said, response vehicles for different, you know, if you've got, um, you know, trails that you're trying to get out to, if you've got bodies of water and you need boats, all of that impacts uh, space needs. So I think it's different from community to community.
Same. Um, chief, I was trying to, I was trying to find your report. If you can recall, how much has your call volume and responses escalated in like the last five, ten years?
I, hey, you put me on the spot.
Sorry.
I don't have the, it it, it's up. I I want to say two hundred percent over the, over the past ten years. And most of it is is mental health calls. Um, and these are not easy solves, that, you know, we spend hours. Um, Lieutenant Lennon um, handles that side of the house and uh, it it it's busy.
So even though those calls don't result in arrests or detainments or arraignments or anything like that, it's consuming. It it's something that we didn't have to do fifteen years ago.
There's no stat attached to. You you, but you, a person can pull FBI crime stats, you know, called Part One crimes. You know, the fact is, we're not running from bank robbery to bank robbery. We're not, you know, we we're just, we're not that, it's it's not the um, the demographic here, it's not, it's not what we do. But we are, you know, helping people on a daily basis, but how do you measure that, to your point? Um, there's not a stat for that, really. You know, how do you measure how happy an employee is coming to work? There's no, there's no way, how do you, how do you quantify that or qualify it? Um, you know, some of these things are not measurable, but it's, it is measured by um, you know, the service that the department is is providing to the community and the the feedback we get from the community. So, you know, we have our share of, you know, Part One crimes, don't get me wrong. Um, and you know, you see it in the newspaper or on the news. Um, but it's not every day. And uh, but the small things that we do every day, um, you know, they're hard to keep track of and they're hard to quantify. Uh, but we're doing them.
But you've, you've started reporting out on mental health calls and.
We started tracking that, I think, last year or the year before.
Yeah.
Because the.
D V calls and things like that.
It's resting.
Yeah, so we can, we can get a good sense of that.
Um, hard to tell how much we've prevented.
Right. Right. Um, chief mentioned about the uh, emergency management center um, being in in the Deer Hill School and how um, in your experience with public safety buildings in various towns, typically where are emergency management centers located?
Usually that's ideally to be located in the public safety building.
In the public safety building.
We completed a project recently for the town of Ashland. And um, they're on the marathon route, so the police and fire being co-hosted there to be able to react to any needs there was very important. The emergency management was there onsite as well, so they had, similar to this facility, their training room was also used for emergency management, so they could set up in there for any events that happen, particularly at the marathon, but any other community events. So the police, fire and the emergency personnel could all respond to events at the same time.
Okay, and there would be, would would there be any cost savings to leaving it at the Deer Hill School? And that that space, if I recall correctly, is kind of in the middle of the building, right?
It is in, it is in the middle of the building.
Yeah, so.
Require, you know, redesign, yes, what would you, would you?
What would you put there or would you just leave it?
Right.
Leave it empty, okay. Um, because I do concur with chief about the disruption um, that it causes, that's, you know, with with not our our most precious children, you know, K K through two, but it is grades three through five and police presence, um, although our SROs are doing a fabulous job with our schools. Uh, we added one last year for the Osgood Deer Hill campus, you know, and familiarizing kids and having them not be afraid of of the police like we were in my day, but um, not that I ever got in trouble, but. Yeah. No, no reason, but I'm just, I'm just saying, so so they have such positive experiences with the police and the recreation department through different days, touch of truck days, things like that. And the fire department, that to have an event in, I know what what one you're talking about recently. It it is, you know, it it alerts um, us as adults. And I I can just imagine what seeing all those news trucks and cruisers and things like that would do to um, to the classroom, um, to the kids in school, because Deer Hill is all windows, that whole perimeter is windows. And and they look outside and then they look inside to the courtyard. Um, so that that was uh, my question. What are some, oh, you already articulated some of the things you got rid of. Is there anything in this plan or in other buildings that we might find ourselves ten, fifteen years down the road, and I'm asking you to look into your crystal ball, saying, if only we had, like, or some of the newer, bigger projects, do they have things that if we, if only we had this in ten or fifteen years, we would be in a better position, if that makes any sense?
I I I think we're designing a building that's going to allow the chief to grow for twenty years. The building's going to last fifty.
Okay.
It's going to easily be able to grow into it for twenty years. Um, it it it's so different town by town that I I I don't know that we can look into that crystal ball. For example, you guys have Shrek.
Right.
So you don't have nine one one in your, in your police station.
Right.
A lot of towns that we deal with don't have that regional dispatch. And we have to, you know, we have to put in a ginormous amount of technology for nine one one.
Mm-hmm.
You know, Taunton has eight stations uh, that we're finishing up right now, they have eight stations for nine one one. They're staffing five, uh, you know, because they're anticipating it's going to grow to eight over that twenty, thirty, forty, fifty period. So we, you know, absent nine one one, Shrek closing down or something like that, I I think you've got everything that you need uh, for the future based on the exhaustive interviews that the team has made with both police and fire. I mean, uh, you know, the same goes with, the same goes with the fire station. I mean, I I I, you know, I'm not oblivious to the chatter that, you know, the station's not manned twenty-four hours a day. Um, and this station's fifty years. You know, you have aging population, staffing's going to increase, whether we like it or not. We're going to all as towns be forced to deal with an aging population. And, you know, we believe we have a design that works really well for the town of Cohasset. We think it's extremely efficient, the bids are nice and tight. And I think I I I think the team did a really, really good job with the task that we were given. Unfortunately, we couldn't do it for ten million, four hundred thousand.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Prag has a few more questions.
The microphone, because this one. Thank you so much. Wouldn't be the first time, but um, I just had two quick questions. Um, number one was, and I just want to highlight this, is that the current police station, it's my understanding they do not have women's locker rooms, is that correct?
We do have a women's locker room, but there's not enough lockers for the number of sworn and civilian females that we have, so that there are females without lockers.
Okay, how many do we have on staff right now?
How many females?
Yes.
We have two sworn and we have five civilian between desk attendants and admin.
And the current design of the new uh, public safety building would would account for all of those offices, is that correct?
That's right.
Thank you. Um, the second one was regarding uh, the cells and the citations that were receiving from the state. Uh, could you briefly explain um, why the cells are not in compliance? And again, they were built in the early sixties. And again, they were built in the early sixties, but what it, what is the issue with them versus what they should be? I mean, if you need this, just talk to me.
Sure, uh, the cells are not of adequate size. They do not have drinking water. Uh, they have bars, um bars are not used anymore. Um, this plexiglass that has been retrofitted over the bar, so he. Makes it more difficult to hang yourself. But the plexi, it's so old now that that the the rivets and the um. The uh security screws are coming out. So, you know, people, you know, someone could be in one of those cells, and it's not uncommon. If you get arrested on a Friday night, say, over Columbus Day. Um, you could be there for, you know, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday till Tuesday at the next sitting of court. Um, so people have nothing but time on their hands. To try to disassemble those cells. There's no panic buttons. In the cells, they're required panic buttons, so I'm a detainee can get a hold of an officer. The, the uh, the communicate, the intercom. In the cells are the re- they're retrofitted in. There's no real um. We're supposed to, we we have. By policy, we have to check the prisoner every twenty minutes. We're using, we're using our key access codes now. We just put it, we put a receiver in the cell block, we scan out our key fobs. Um, to show that we checked on the prisoner, that's not the way it's supposed to be. Um, when when they come to, when they come to inspect these cells, they literally go in there and, and you know, the inspector comes in. And, you know, the, the paint was chipping on the floor. Last year, we had to paint the floors. They didn't want someone, you know, peeling the paint up and eating it. Uh, again, these are all, you know, things you don't think of, but. Uh, the state, there's regulations that cover all these, and they're just, they're too small. Um, that did, that, you know, you cannot accommodate a wheelchair. Or someone with a disability. Um, I I could go on and on, but I.
They still porcelain fixtures?
Yes, there's still porcelain fixtures in some of the cell, in, not inside the cells, but um outside the female cell, there's porcelain sink. It's a big no-no, and also in the booking area, there's a porcelain sink. All these things are weapons. If someone takes the handcuffs, hits a porcelain sink. It's, you know, you'll have a very sharp object.
That is, that is one of the. Uh, big inspections we get, and when the facility is complete, here's the public safety inspection. Of. The the cells, I know the cells can't, the cells can't even have. We have to put in pick, pick proof caulk. So with this, wherever this caulk, you can't be able to pull it out, so that you can get a string behind it and hang yourself. I mean, that. That cell is nowhere near compliance. I mean, not even, I I'm not surprised you get gigged all the time.
He gave us a a warning a couple times ago because there was a spider in the cell. I mean, that's against the rules too, but, you know, at least he was decent enough to give me a warning on that, but I got it with everything else.
So from a town perspective, um if if a prisoner was to hurt themselves within the cell, as you talked about before. Uh, the town would be considered not just negligent, but under gross negligence. And then the town would be on the hook for a major lawsuit. Uh, from that, if somebody was to hurt themselves in those non-compliant cells, is that correct?
I I'm not a lawyer, but I've been talking about this, that. A new police station has been on the capital budget plan since two thousand and six. It's on every year, and we'd carry it forward. And it started out, I think, at four million dollars, and every year it goes up incrementally. Um, so it's been, it's been on the, on the plan for twenty years that I know of personally. Um. And one of the main things has been the cells, so. Uh, you know, you're an attorney. I I don't know, I I've just, I've I've been in court, I've seen how attorneys work and. If if there's a dark. I say that with all due respect. Um, but if there's a twenty-year history of us saying. You know, these are not working, they're not compliant, we're being written up yearly. For issues with it, and we haven't addressed this, and we're not able to address it, that's the other thing. You know, we we, the envelope can't get any bigger, it has to be redesigned.
Yeah, I would say every citation that's against the town is gonna be. C and so forth, and and the town won't. Have much of an answer other than saying, we didn't like the price. And you're not gonna like the price of the. If you don't like the price of the police station, you're sure as hell not gonna like the price of the lawsuit that we're gonna be up for either. Um, and that will be in the millions.
And I'm not even.
Guys in that cell.
I'm just, I'm not sure the insurance applications is, you know, what does the insurance carrier say? If if you knowingly, you know, it's, it's like your neighbor tells you to chop down the tree and. Is the insurance company gonna say, you knew about this, this is a longstanding problem? We're not gonna cover you. I I don't know.
The insurance carrier will run for the hills and they'll deny the coverage, that's what they will do. Especially if you have gross negligence.
That's a fact.
Um, and that, and they, and then you'll be in a fight with not only. Paying out. A claim, you'll be in the fight with the insurance companies as well, which will cost the town more legal fees to be defending both ends, so. Anyway, that's just one point of one of the issues, so I'll leave it there. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Grady had one more question.
One more question, but I will follow up my colleague and say, we're lost, we know it's something's happened. But, uh, something Cheryl brought up that I just wanna follow up with. Anyone can use this question. Have you been, been your experience? Designs, especially doing municipal building that you guys have your expertise in. That has been approved. Knocked down. Put together. But then they ended up coming back later on because they need more, they sold themselves short the first time for whatever.
So, so, so is the, is the question? Uh, i- i- is the question, have you, have we ever had a community that? Cut back and, cut back and did a half a loaf and then came back and did the full load later?
In your experience. That I understand Situ was coming back to redesign, they're spending two hundred thousand dollars on a redesign. So I'm just wanna know if that's uh, is anything out there?
Cheryl would know actually about Situ.
I mean, I I can't speak for Situ. But I certainly can speak for Marshfield, uh, just, just, just their senior center. And they're ten years and they, they double the size of it. So municipal projects have a history of trying to pull back so far not to upset the apple cart. Um. You know, uh, the, the, the school building authority doesn't let you do that. You have to do their program all the way through, get it passed or not get their money. Uh, but all the other, all the other municipal projects, uh, I I think you could find plenty of examples where it wasn't built. Big enough. I don't know about. Public safety because we've, we demand that the project be done right. I mean, I I would, I wouldn't. Sit before you and make a recommendation for this project. And this contract, if if we didn't think the program was fulfilling cohesive needs for the next.
That's why we asked the question, because so. Listen, on that, that's the one I've heard of.
So Situ is the only, you know, one I can speak to. Um, so Situ's project was built in twenty thirteen, twenty sixteen, commissioned. Um, just last year. Just last year, um, they commissioned a study for two hundred thousand dollars to get the locker rooms, because they don't have sufficient space for their female. Officers. Um, they've also commissioned a study for an health building. I think that was two or three years after. The building was finished, because they realized they didn't have enough storage space. So that was another two hundred and some odd thousand dollars. Um. As of late, they're uh revamping their EOC room. Um, so it lasted about seven years and and they realized there's sufficient, so therefore they're.
I wasn't the OPM on that.
Okay, um, so I'd like to um acknowledge Mr. Dan Tarpe, he's in the back of the room there, he's our citizen. Voice of Reason who worked on the, on on this working group with everyone at the table and Mr. Grady, and I don't know. Mr. Tarpe, if you had anything you'd like to contribute or add.
Thanks, Chief. Um, for those who don't know, the uh, Dan Tarpe twelve base lane. Um, I was selected to be, as Ms. Marsh said, the citizen member of the. Uh, public safety board, never having done anything in town government before. I do have some experience, however, with um facilities of this nature, um secure facilities, that sort of thing like that. Um, in. Despite a lack of. Familiarity with. Uh, public construction. I sat in at every meeting. At every stage of the game, um, I was tremendously impressed. By all the members of the group, particularly Chief Docker and Chief Woodley, who every, at every turn of events, every question. Look for ways to save the town money. Yet build a facility that is gonna last for the next fifty years. Every single time. I started with the iteration, either three thousand square feet down to twenty-three thousand square feet. It can't go any lower. And let's put this in perspective. The current location of the police. Police station, fire station, is an impediment to public safety. We all know that the facility needs to be up on three A. There's a reason why Hingham. And Marshfield. How do you think them and Situ are on three A? Marshfield's on one thirty-nine, the primary Egress roads. In and out of the town. Now, I can't get twenty-five years ago. They drop one three A, I have pretty much every day, and I can't tell you how much that experience has changed over the last several years. It is in all of our interests. To make sure that the police are up there. It's in everybody's interest to make sure that the ambulance is up on three A for all the reasons we talked about. From its current location, if the ambulance is dispatched to my neighborhood and the trains coming across, we're in trouble. I've had that experience. These guys picked me up about four years ago. I had to gate a wump, it's up, but I had a heart attack. And they, thank you, the train wasn't running that day, they got me over to three, they got me over to Central Hospital, and the cardiologist told me. That every second. Of delay was gonna cause me problems in the long term, you know, recovery. Thankfully, everything's okay. But two or three minutes. Was huge, that one. If the train's coming through, there's your child in the schools, or your child on the uh, on the playing fields or in the gyms. And they need medical attention, and you're delayed for two or three, and that ambulance is delayed for two or three minutes due to the train, shame on us. Shame on us. If somebody's in an accident on three A and the ambulance is coming from the Elm Street, and it's delayed for two or three minutes. Shame on us. We can't have that. That's, the current facility was built sixty-two for short money. It was revamped. Renovated, if you will, for uh, for not much more than that a few years later. And I've had the opportunity to tour that facility, and it's a disgrace. We need to move. The police station up to three A, the fire substation up to three A. It should have been done years ago. We all know that. Okay, and the cost is, to do it right now is something that should have been won. Two or three decades ago. Unfortunately, it didn't happen, and I'm not having the experience of anybody who was there at that point. They had other things to worry about. But we cannot delay this project any further. It has to happen.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tarpe. Um, all right, does anyone have any more questions? Okay. Okay, we, we have about, are there any questions from the audience? Any questions online, Rich? Nope. Well, any of our um. Finest in blue wanna make a comment? I don't wanna put you on the spot, but you've been involved, you're here supporting, I would assume. Okay. Thank you. Yeah, so, so our next steps, um, Mr. Senior, are are we voting on the numbers tonight?
Yeah, you.
I mean, it's not on the agenda to vote, but. Should it be on the, on an upcoming agenda to vote to get it in the warrant?
You're you're reviewing articles for a special town meeting, so.
Okay.
I think it's a fairly comprehensive s- statement, so. It is important to be able, for the board to get final direction about the article.
Okay.
Um, both because we need that, and for this to go to the ballot as well, you have to authorize.
Right.
I've already talked to council, so that's a progress, just so it's ready.
Okay.
And we also are having to, so. Special election date.
Okay, um, and the the other thing that that came up, and I think Michelle has accomplished this, is we got a recommendation to have a peer review. Um, of the project um by an outside party. Um, just to make sure, not that your work is, is not what we want it to be, but. We wanna make sure, because it is a lot of money for this little town. We wanna have another set of eyes, just, just look at it and we can do it relatively quickly. Um, and.
Great idea.
Yep, and we'll, we'll go from, we'll go from there. Someone who's, you know, qualified, it's architect, right? A peer re- a peer review? Can you kind of give us thirty seconds on a peer review?
A peer review is a peer review. Uh, they're gonna, they're gonna review to just make sure that the, the current design, you know. Meets the standards of today. Um, they're not gonna go through every doorknob or every hinge, but they're gonna go through to make sure. The cell block's designed correctly, that the flow of, of prisoner transport works and that, uh. You know. The program as laid out. With the conditions of being at one thirty-five, uh, the project is designed efficiently.
Great, thank you.
One thing, just because you mentioned that, that the project is under review right now with the Department of Public Safety for the detention cells.
Okay.
And I've received initial comments back, and the design does meet their requirements, the state regulated requirements for detention cells, the. Last little piece of information that they want is the paint color. So that is the thing that is holding us up, but everything else.
Sage is a color.
Believe it or not, it it it's important to, capital.
Right.
Of the, of the, of the, of the detainee.
Right. You want something soothing, calming.
Well, and easily cleanable, where you can see things that are on the walls and forms.
My day was a dull green, I can tell you that.
I'm green on top, dull green on the bottom.
So, so the review's underway.
So, okay, so state requirements on the detention cells, okay, so that's a check. Okay, excellent, thank you. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
Thanks.
Okay. A little over, but I think it was worth it, um. Yeah, yeah, so, so we, as part of our public outreach on uh public safety on one thirty-five King Street and. Elm Street, we will be holding um. One or two forums, Michelle.
Um, there'll be two forums.
Two public forums.
Um, I don't have the dates in front of me, but they will be publicized, um.
Okay.
After our capital budget getting turned, I think one is hinged on capital budgets.
Okay.
Schedule, um, because they're using one thirty-five King Street, we're holding a forum on one thirty-five King Street.
Yeah.
So we have to make sure that we have space to hold the forum.
Okay.
I know there, there's one forum already set up for Sunrise. Um, they're gonna get the residents there, they may have mobility issues, so, so they hear, um.
Oh, interesting, yeah, great.
Um, and then, like I said, the old booths are scheduled for October second, so that's a s- a smaller group. Um, I know the men's group that meets here at UCA, um, they've been attending those meetings. Then the other larger public forum, ladies and gentlemen, I have a better idea of that date, but I believe it's probably third week in October.
Okay.
All right. One last thing, there's actually a tour of the public safety building at sixty-two Elm Street, um, and that's October eleventh. It's in conjunction with um. Their. Fire safety. Open house.
Oh, right, right, I saw that, yeah, okay, so we'll, we'll keep repeating that u- until we get to that point in time. Okay, thank you, and and as soon as we have all the dates locked down, and, you know, I would like to make sure we have like a, a big general public forum. Um, that's not, you know, um, specific to. Individual groups, which I I think that's great. Okay, so we're gonna go on to the um warrant articles, review special town meeting.
I think what I, what I talked about most of the time is just the, it's the order, so based on commentary, I kind of moved it around a little bit, I'm checking. So any input on that would be helpful, uh, lots to stay up. So we're gonna start with the. The uh, community market article, just creating the revolving fund. Um, unpaid bills, unfortunately, there's been a few more added, but we shake them trees, so those, that would be next. Stabilization funds, uh, next, after that. And then we go on to the capital, but there's only a few things, there's. A water project, a sewer project, and it's uh. Uh, two people on the town side, I'll just, capital tomorrow, uh, so. A trench drain replacement has to be done at the highway garage, uh, it captures. Runoff and stuff, so it doesn't dent the ground. Uh, there was some degrading, and then you can go down the floor there. It's about forty-two thousand dollars, then. Uh, there's gonna be a full repurposedment of money for the budget plus, so the schools will have that bus. Uh, it's like two thousand, so. By the council, the recommendation was just have ten, this was specifically electric bus, it was better to have that boat.
Yeah, so do they have the, the new diesel bus now, or they won't have it till?
Um, I think they, they extended their lease agreement to be co-terminez with what we have, um. What was our approval to make sure that they could run the routes that they have, because the electric bus wasn't sufficient to run all the routes for the school year.
Okay. Okay.
Let me go into the, uh, the Oscar roof. Uh, and that, that's, I think, I think they have the language all clean now. Uh, and then we have.
So, can we, can we go back to that? So last week, Ms. Dugan made a recommendation that in the informational summary, that we articulate our ability to participate by virtue of the creation of the stabilization fund and what the balance is, is I.
So we can, we can, we can add that into there. We, I'm just, we just by back and forth to making sure we're getting all the right MSBA language. Now that that's in here, I'll add another piece to it that'll say that.
Yeah, well, the MSBA isn't, doesn't necessarily dictate the informational summary.
They included stuff when they sent us, so.
Okay.
And I, so.
I, I just think it's important that the town knows that.
No, no, I, I agree, and I, I will add a section two, because I think it's important to understand.
Right, right, and strategically, we'll go back to the summer twenty-three, when we started talking about this in a past special town meeting, and we've been authorizing it every year for justice purpose and increasing it two and a half percent every year as, as per the tax levy allows. Sorry, you can.
No, no, um, then, um, and then that's the, the public tent, that's, so, um. And then we just have, based on your direction tonight to go with the proposals in front of you. It will also this will also be set something next week, well, uh, we'll, we'll get the number fifteenth as, as the date. Uh, it's the second Saturday for the town meeting. That's, that's typically the lag we've had between a meeting and a meeting. You have to, I think, set that. Not next Tuesday, October, yeah, so, next Tuesday.
Can we, for, we, we're, we're doing next week's agenda tomorrow morning, but I would like to talk about the public safety building, but from a financing perspective and have schedules of debt and debt roll off. Because it's not that we borrow all whatever the number is going to be at one time, right? It's over time as the project evolves, so, and, and how, how does it roll off? You know, and we should talk about, um, ta, talk about how we want to, how to manage this along with Elm Street, which we didn't get into tonight.
Then there's the enterprise fund, uh, creation, followed by amendments, the operating budget, talked about, uh, and, um, one of those, uh, number nine contingent on.
Julie has a question. Um, before we skip over, um, the enterprise fund, could I recommend that we really beef up the informational summary on that?
Yes.
It is lacking right now.
Nothing.
Okay, I'd like it to be really comprehensive. I'd like it to cover all of the main talking points from the, from the, the forums that were held with the most important reasons for creating it at the top.
What will also be, uh, on the town's webpage will be a, a page, people can link to an electronic version of this and then click on things and get them to more detailed information.
Yeah, I, I think that's amazing, but there is a significant portion of our, of our community residents who don't regularly run on the computer and click on links. They get their paper warrant in the mail and they will read it word for word. So as much as we can have in writing on paper that gets mailed to folks is going to be important, I think.
Yeah.
First, I gotta say I agree with Julie, all heartily. I could even warn, as a matter of fact, people who go on, they are gonna read it and follow to. A fantastic point.
It may be, it may be, so in the past, we've done some appendixes too. Particularly when it's been zoning articles, they got a little complicated. Uh, it might not be a bad idea to do some more comprehensive on the public safety building too, let me put some more materials. So just let me know what it is that we want to put in.
Yeah. And on these informational summaries, this one, um, and, and others, um, I, and, and maybe it's just me and everyone can say, no, it's fine. I think bullet points are, are much better to read and highlight as opposed to paragraphs of.
Well, so typically, they're only aligned to, so, but if they're longer, I agree, the simpler the information.
Yeah.
I think you want to kind of customize this one.
Yeah, yeah, I know, there's a lot of, a lot of very meaty, complicated things. And, um.
More information with that or anything?
Uh, the one-time costs, so there's, there was a request for ten thousand from the, you know, historic, Village Historic District Study Committee, so I added that, this, uh, that would give them the first stage knockoff part of the mission. Uh, they'll probably ask for more money in the spring.
And, and free cash is FY twenty-five free cash.
FY twenty-six.
FY twenty-six free cash that will be certified.
So, uh, Beth is planning to file uh, next, next week, uh, September third. She's waiting for the schools to lock down some, uh, revolving funds and she expects to be certified within a few weeks.
So FY twenty-six free cash, okay, okay.
The, uh, a town park regulations is, is, I haven't talked with the clerk, it's gonna be, I think, simpler than, I'm sorry, it's not in here right now. After going back and forth to take the parking, this is eight section, chapter two forty-four, and shrink it down to just two, where it's, instead of saying, these are the lots I have, this, you need a permit or if it's required to have a permit, and the regulations are adopted by the select board and projection with the clerk and they're sold, and so. It, it, it's gonna make it simpler besides the fact that select board has a power of parking anyway. It's gonna simplify it. Some of these, the language gets a little confusing and there's names for some lots that nobody even remembers. Look, and I'll both look at ourselves, I'm not sure what that even means. So I think it'll be simpler, so, to, 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 true, like, I remember what's done with HR in ten years. Create a menu, right, and that, I governed it. So the regulations governing any, select board adopts, so what'll happen after this is, it's time for a reset anyway, so the clerk's gotta come by and we'll talk after the meeting and go through some, some updates to the regulations, particularly. At any five, it's by, it's gonna, continue talking about how, what are the files, since it's time to revisit. If you don't have a permit to beach, what's the, what's the penalty for, there are caps that we've done some seasonal increases and maybe it's time to make some permits.
Or, or different regulations.
Right.
So, yeah.
The, the, the next articles, we, we discussed this allows the select board at, at the request of a license holder of wine on premises that generate some alcohol and that, that, that's the tennis or adopt the ordinance and then it's, it's an option, the select board's gonna grant it or something.
And this is something the state of Massachusetts is allowing for all municipalities who approve it.
Right. I was still, we're still waiting on a file, and so, the, the, the hearing took place, I can mention, I testified on it two weeks ago. And we're hopeful, it's supposed to issue a report fairly soon, hopefully they'll vote on this file.
The last question, I have a question on that.
Sure.
That will not affect, you know, what we thought this. That won't affect our ongoing question.
Uh, this just allows a license to be fungible, that actually allows more, because we're still, we're still out of, so, we're, 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 our last one is, is pending. I believe it's coming soon. Then, uh, I've got a sewer lane, it's just, it's just adopting language that here is our, if you don't pay your bill, it goes on a tax. Council said you probably should have this, it's just better. Um, I, I, the AEC still has to present to the school community, I don't know that they have yet, uh, on the article from team, we allow, it just authorizes potential for lease of school roofs if it's an economic environment, so. So I, I don't know where they are on that.
So even though this was done about ten years ago, it needs to be done again?
The, the consent for Tanya and others, that is my step.
On, on, should, of the different boards are voting, or should the AEC be on there too?
Well, they're the, they've, they've asked, they're the kind of a proponent of this right now.
Yeah, but just in terms of the, the tally of the vote.
So we don't, we don't always put advisor committees down, but I can't, they don't have their advisor in select, like, we can add.
I think so, yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's their article. Yeah.
And then this is official, so, um. I, I think it, it, it would be in practice to have the, potentially have the petition, the petition's coming tomorrow night to advise, so. Maybe have them come next week to formally present this article, so, let me, next week, I guess.
Sure, sure.
My office, formally, why should, just do it right now, so. So the petition is formally invited to next Tuesday, select board meeting to present.
This is the actual language?
As far as I know.
Okay.
It's been cleared by town council.
Well, I mean, it, it, it was an opportunity to meet with council, um, council doesn't, I mean, yeah, so, what was presented was presented. This is, I believe, as far as I know.
We can ask that next week then.
Okay, that's the, so, tomorrow, advisory goes point to debt fund, mostly, we've already gone through the warrant from top to bottom. But probably not any public safety tomorrow, because capital is gonna so they can fill another week. So I, I, I'm, I, I don't really want to ask this, but I'm gonna, I'm just gonna consider holding October seventh as a possible short meeting to do. But no, you can also go ahead of it, you don't always do that, you could, if you're comfortable and ready to vote on some things that advisory might not have voted on yet, they'll also button up, they'll leave stuff next week. Really can't wait until seven.
October seventh.
You can do it later too, I mean, we're already meeting on Tuesday, I don't feel like it twice.
We're already what?
You're already meeting, I, I don't think you want to be twice.
Not before.
So, so the thirtieth, so the agenda tonight says the thirtieth, the fourteenth, and the twenty-eighth.
Right.
So October.
The fourteenth is beyond, the warrant has to be.
Right, but what's the other meeting the week of the seventh?
No, no, the, the question is, if, if you need to do one more meeting, so.
Yeah, well, let's cancel, let's put it, put it down. It's easier to cancel it than it is to last minute try to get everybody together, right?
It'll be very short, they may not need it at all.
And, and it's just warrant, right?
Warrant.
Okay. That's the warrant, okay, um. Any other comments?
So, um, there'll be more details soon, but I, I wanted to announce that, uh, very excited to announce that Donika Castle, uh, who's now the, uh, licensed social worker for Bedford Senior Center, uh, has, joining us as the director of Elder Affairs. They should start in this month, I had a great, uh, great meetings with her, uh, including a panel and including Russell Foss, the former to get to some other department heads, uh, everyone felt great about her. She, she's been in Bedford for a number of years and really understands how seniors does work and has worked with seniors in that setting. Also has extensive experience, um, uh, beyond that, uh, in, in the community, in, in Metro West area, which actually fortunately lives locally, so for her, it's kind of covered, one of those rare moments for some beneficial. So, uh, again, it's been working with Elder Affairs Board, there's been something, maybe she's been working with regularly, so they've been engaged. She let them know earlier, so, uh, she's been talking to the chairs, I don't know if you know officially, so hopefully we'll have her in soon, well, when she, when she starts, it's coming, in October, I think.
What's her name again?
Donika Castle.
Donika? Okay.
We're excited to, excited for her to join, and that will actually bring us forward, so, um, we have a great assistant director, a great outreach coordinator, great admin and a reader, um, to form semi-retired teacher, it's just so energetic and friendly. So I saw her on her first day, she was so excited, so, uh, so I think, um, I think it's, the team is really jobless, so. So that's, that is my big news.
Okay, all right, uh, select board comments, Ms. Rollins.
Done.
Mr. Farag.
Thank you, just had a quick two. Um, this, just want to remind everybody on the community this Thursday, it's gonna be the tenth anniversary of the Senior Center here at Wilcutte Commons, uh, and I believe the festivity's gonna start at nine thirty, am I correct, in the morning? Um, so if you haven't reserved your space to come, please call Elder Affairs and do so. Um, and it's a, it's gonna be a very joyous occasion for, um, what it changed the community has been by having the Senior Center here and having uh, a new building from what, of course, it used to be a, being one of the senior center, it was one room in the community center. Um, and look at all the programs and everything that are able to be done here at Wilcutte and, and improve the lives of our seniors here in town and the general community, and of course, our meetings, wouldn't be able to have our meetings without the senior center here. So, uh, with that being said, pay sure to, uh, come here if you want to celebrate tenth anniversary, nine thirty this Thursday, and call Elder Affairs, it's also a good spot. Uh, and secondarily, I know it was mentioned, because we did go over some of the, uh, police station tonight, is that there's gonna be public forums regarding it, um, so those members out in the community who might not have been able to attend tonight or seen the agenda, um, there's gonna be plenty of time for the public to come in and weigh in regarding it. And I hope that when they are posted, that, uh, we do get a good attendance, uh, for that public forum. I mean, please bring in your questions with it and then to understand, um, where the town needs to go, because it's, I think we all need to look at what is in the best interest of the town, not just today, but in years going forward. So, uh, just make sure to be watching out, sure to be posted everywhere, but make sure to come to that forum, because, uh, that, that is the time to uh, answer questions for a town meeting. Be a little different than animal, and it, then there's not the back and forth that you could have, that you could have at a forum. Uh, you can only ask the general question, obviously, at town meetings, so, so please attend, um, and we look forward to hearing from you. And that's it for tonight, thank you.
Great, thank you, Mr. Plax.
And I have the confirmation.
Yep, you all signed it, yep.
Nothing to add tonight, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Brady?
No, I think it's all been said, thank you.
Okay, um, I just have a couple of quick updates. So, uh, at our last meeting, we agreed that the Long Range Financial Planning Group would, would reconstruct themselves, and we have our first meeting Thursday night, Chair of Capital, Chair of Advisory, Chair of the School Committee and myself, and we're gonna look at the twenty-twenty-three plan and see where we need to update and layer on, um, where we are today and going forward in terms of, um, you know, um, sorry, uh, public projects and our infrastructure needs. Um, so that's Thursday, um, Mr. Senior and I have, or will start our quarterly meetings with the school department on Monday, October second, um, with Superintendent Shannon and Chair Lesky. Um, these are great touch faces to keep the towns and the schools informed of, of what's going on, uh, what's happening and where we might see needs going forward. Capital and advisory are meeting tomorrow night, uh, Capital is going, has, um, a laundry list of questions, um, for public safety after their meeting last week, and those will be addressed, um. So their meeting, I, I don't have the advisory agenda, but it, public safety is not on the advisory agenda.
It was generally, but I think we're gonna have to pass on, because I think it's, they may have a conversation about it, because Mike Mark's a place at once, but I don't think we can have, can't have a whole presentation, so. They, they, if you notice, we had a moment.
Mark was here, yeah.
And we let them all know what's just happening, so if they feel comfortable, they may.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I, I think, um, I, I think, you know, hindsight being twenty-twenty, when we have these kinds of big presentations and we have people coming in from out of town that are, you know, are project managers or OPMs, we ought to try to do as many joint meetings as possible, um. Especially for capital and advisory, the questions might be different, capital is probably more focused on the actual project advisory is probably gonna be focused on financing, but it doesn't hurt. And, um, I think it'd be good to kill two birds with one stone, so just going forward as, as a, as a thought bubble there. Um, okay, so we have, and, anything else, no? Um, so next week, just so everyone knows, um, we will, uh, the opening item on the agenda will be a joint meeting with the school committee to select, um, to appoint someone to fill the vacated seat, um, on the school committee until next year's election, they have four candidates. They will send us their applications, um, in a packet, and we will go through what we've gone through a couple of times already this season doing that. Um, so that'll open the meeting, we will close the meeting with an executive session at the end. Just so everyone doesn't get antsy and wants to leave, but we'll have executive session at the end of the meeting and we will close the meeting, um. We will close the jet, the public meeting in executive session. We will close the jet, the public meeting and executive session as is allowed, um. Okay, so that's it, so we have approval of minutes, uh, we're gonna do this in in two sections, um. So we have minutes for September third and September sixteenth, Mr. Flex was absent, um. On those two meetings, so can I have a motion to approve the minutes of September third and September sixteenth?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Extension?
Abstain.
Abstain, okay. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes of September ninth?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great, thank you. No topics, so at eight fifty-one, can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.